Why don't we go ahead and call the meeting to order of the Planning, String Hill Planning Commission of November sixth, twenty twenty five. And we'll start with. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Dobson, Mr. Earhart.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Aravalo.
Here.
Ms. Crivier.
Here.
Mr. Sly.
Here.
Ms. Squire.
Mr. Morse.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, next item is approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, scene nine, the agenda is approved, as presented. Our next item is citizen participation. Do we have anybody on the list?
No.
Okay. Anybody that would like to speak that didn't sign up? If not, citizen's participation is. Gone and uh. Do we have any introductions that we need to do before?
Um, yes.
This is Ian. He is our new city planner. Hopefully you've met.
Welcome.
This is the board.
Welcome in. We have a presentation to start off our meeting.
Hey, everyone. I'm Allison Abel, the city engineer, and um, I am pleased to introduce Jen Russell. Uh, she has a tool that she would like to introduce to you guys. Amy, Ian and I uh, went through this tool with her a few weeks ago. We think that this is maybe uh, something that will help us make decisions moving forward with the comp plan. I know there's a few things based off of our work session discussion a few months ago that uh, we need to move the needle. So we thought that this would be a good tool, good way for us to kind of get to some of the issues and figure out a way that we can move forward. So um, Jen is gonna do a presentation tonight of the tool that she's developed. And if you guys are open to it, then we would love to do a work session with you next couple of weeks, next month, whenever it works out for our schedule. I know with the holidays, it might be difficult to get something on the schedule, but um, like to set something up if you guys are interested in the tool that she has.
Okay.
And of course, the price is right because this is the pilot program that she is offering to us um, as a way to help us out, but also to highlight her, her software that she's developed. So with that, I'd like to introduce Jen Russell.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for letting me um, come and speak with you. Hopefully I can, oh, it looked worked right away. That's awesome. So I am Jennifer Russell from uh, NSI Advisory Services. I've been in the Kansas City metro area for about seventeen years. And uh, started my career uh, as an army officer and spent twenty years in public infrastructure consulting after that. Uh, so- sojourned as an army officer. Um, during that time while I was serving in public infrastructure as a consultant, I participated in many, many projects and watched many, many projects, comprehensive plans, long-range plans. Um, not quite fulfill the goals or the initial intent that the community had hoped to get out of that project. And so I asked myself, what was happening? Why, why is this, why are these projects not quite doing what we want them to do? And there are many, many constraints, political constraints, funding constraints, there are so many reasons that if we look superficially, we can certainly assess those are the reasons. But after some research, I came across some psychology research that had been put together by an economist, a sociologist and psychologist, um, who determined that there are fundamental reasons that people live together in community. So I set about trying to understand that and recognize that these fundamental needs, fundamental human needs are the reason that people live in community. And so we have begun to build uh, services rooted in these fundamental human needs. They were developed in nineteen eighty-nine as a frame of reference. Maybe some of you may have heard of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? Maslow says you need food and water and maybe one day you need a hug. Nope.
Shelter.
Yeah, right, some shelter in there too. That's not quite how humans work and that's not how we thrive and that's not how you create an ideal community. But these provide a different perspective. So the nine fundamental human needs are subsistence, protection, education, creation, identity, affection, leisure, participation and freedom. We need all of these things and all of these need to be in balance when we create a project.
Which, which one is self-actualization?
Right, that's what comes when you put all of these together, right? That's what happens. That empowers that opportunity for self-actualization for sure. Um, yes. But these are, these are the features and aspects of a community that humans are looking for when they strive to be together. So we've taken these and, and you can see that these fundamental human needs are interactive and interrelated. So we have arranged them in a circular format to illustrate their connections. And this foundation is the start of our H nine framework. And so the H nine is humans to the power of nine and represents those nine fundamental human needs. Our acronym and our motto, motto is that H nine is special and puts people first, which helps us remember subsistence, protection, education, creation. Uh, and so that acronym helps us, helps us, it's special and puts people first. So I want to correlate this with your comprehensive plan because your comprehensive plan is very well aligned with these fundamental human needs. So if we see, just taking a look at chapter one, you start off with identity. And then the goals within that chapter and objectives align and highlight multiple of the fundamental human needs. Which illustrates that analysis, looking at the fundamental human needs can support great execution of your comprehensive plan. Surely it's difficult to remember all of these as you're going through each uh, each plan and looking at each project as, as one does. And even broader, we look at the rest of the comprehensive plan. It addresses all of the fundamental human needs in there. So I'm confident and you should be confident that as you look at the fundamental human needs, this will reflect the goals of your comprehensive plan in different shapes. So putting this all together, I've created a framework and a process um, that's, that's called H nine. And what this process does is this allows us to quickly identify opportunities and risks, mitigate potential negative consequences and really consider the whole person experience. So this is the goal of the H nine framework. This is the only tool that I have found that connects human needs, individual needs with community needs. And it does that. We know lots of individual assessments. We have the DISC, maybe some of you have done that or Myers-Briggs and whatnot. We have a good handle on that. We have a good handle on community assessments. There are all sorts of indices and healthy living indices and, and blue zones and all sorts of criteria for the community. This bridges the gap and brings that together as one. So um, I'm really excited to share this tool with you guys. I've been building this for quite some time. It's a, it's a little bit like, like my, my own baby here. Um, but it's not just built out of nothing. So we have built this on existing practice and best practices actually uh, of the fundamental human needs from Max Neef that, that are internationally accepted uh, to characterize why people live in community. Um, and it's tailored for a community context. It's based on the NCOSI, which is the International Council on Systems Engineering, smart cities framework. Um, I'm a systems engineer, so I'm not a planner. I'm not, I'm not a sociologist. I'm a systems engineer. So uh, part of what I have done in my life and career is develop a practice for smart cities uh, that is completely applicable here. And so I've taken the constructs from that and the good ideas from that to integrate into the H nine framework. Plus uh, the systems engineering discipline for infrastructure development, which gives us a consistent, rigorous and verifiable approach to our projects. It ties our needs together and it enables whole lifecycle management from, I think I want to do this, all the way to verification at the end, once it's constructed. Did we, did it do what we think it's gonna do? So all of this is combined into this H nine framework that allows us to uh, accelerate critical thinking. It's not easy to think about all of these fundamental human needs and the jobs that you have as the planning commission is not an easy one. And people look to you to, to help think about all of the various aspects of their lives and, and how is it going to impact them? And so this helps accelerate that critical thinking. Uh, it helps you do some consequence management by helping you think about specific risks and helps foster integrated solutions. And then at the end, you have consistent messaging because you know the fundamental human needs that you're fulfilling. So H nine guides you step by step to analyze your project holistically. You identify the opportunities and risks for fulfilling the fundamental human needs and then create an action plan. So we've taken a whole bunch of stuff and distilled it to make it as simple as possible. And what we can do then after the analysis is we get a diagram that looks like this, which shows us green is good, red is caution. Um, the colors reflect the opportunities, risks, if you need more information, and there may be a neutral in there um, as you are evaluating your projects. And so we can see visually how our analysis reflects for this project based on the fundamental human needs. So we start off and I'm, I'll, I'll preface this, on your tables, you all have the access code uh, so that you can access the tool. It is available to you. The website is on there. It's hnineonline.nsieng.com. There's a session ID down at the bottom. It's the three circles at the bottom. We'll go over this again, but you'll be able to log in and access this and work through the tool yourselves. So now we'll, I'll walk a little bit into the tools. You can see um, how it works and what you may be doing. So you'll start off by uh, taking a look at your project and you're going to select a project type. Then you will be presented with a list of factors to help springboard and uh, create opportunities for creativity for you to analyze a project. The goal is to pick one factor for each of the fundamental human needs. So you may think, what the heck does affection have to do with a new industrial park? Well, we have some springboards in there. You should pick one so that you're thinking holistically and you'll be surprised. When we go through it in a couple of weeks, you'll be surprised how many opportunities can come out of that sort of analysis. So again, uh, the acronym FHN is fundamental human need. Just to clarify for you, it goes throughout this whole thing. So there are nine fundamental human needs. We'd like to have nine represented. You can pick more factors. Uh, it allows you to use predefined factors or you can create custom factors. And so uh, doing the analysis, we, this is what we came up with. With those factors then, now comes the springboard for thinking is, you can see, what you see here, this is an actual clip from the, from the um, tool. The opportunities and risks, you see factor for subsistence and we have two factors for subsistence. So those two factors we picked, uh, average household income and year-over-year variance and the cost and accessibility of daycare for zero to two years. Again, these may not seem like they're totally connected to a new industrial facility, but by golly, uh, after doing a little bit of thinking, we were come on, came up with some opportunities and some risks for both of those. And so the idea is to walk through, identify opportunities and risks for each of the fundamental human needs. And, and then uh, you can see the subjective reflection. And I call this subjective because it's, it's up to you. Each person's going to see something a little bit different, which is fine. And that's how it should be because our communities need to represent how we want them to be. And now with this written down, we can create an action plan to figure out how to address each opportunity and risk. And so if we take uh, if we take a new industrial facility potentially, we walk through, uh, we can see a list of the fundamental human needs. And then step by step, each opportunity and each risk, we ask ourselves, what could we do about that? What could be a potential action plan to address either harness that opportunity or mitigate the risk? And then we have a reminder of the factor that was used for inspiration because the idea is, this is creative. This is a creative uh, thought process. This is critical thinking. Um, and so we write down some ideas and then, oops, let's go back one. And then at the end, we have an opportunity to say, do we want to do this? Yes, no, or maybe, right? And so that gives you a little bit more freedom to think outside of the box. It doesn't have to be the answer. But it gives you an opportunity to have a platform to, for discussion. Why do I see this? Is this a risk? And sometimes things are both risk and an opportunity. So this gives us a way to start talking about that. So your H nine session is ready. You can uh, hop on there. It is available to you and uh, I would love for, to hear some feedback from you as members of the community, as members of the planning commission. Um, we've had lots of engineers and, and planners look at this and engage with this, but uh, planning commission will, will be a very different take and I'm really excited to hear your feedback, your recommendations, thoughts, um, and, and if you liked it or not. If it was useful. So that, that is it. Um, NSI is a, a small firm. Uh, we are, we are all remote and we, our systems engineering consultancy, so we don't do design. We don't do community planning specifically. We do systems engineering. So I'm really, again, grateful for your time to listen. I'm anxious to engage with you again in a couple of weeks on this and uh, thanks so much, Allison and Amy and Ian for participating early so we can, we can give this a go.
Thank you.
Look forward to learning more. It, it, it seems complex and overwhelming, but hopefully the framework becomes a little bit easier to comprehend once you get into it.
I, I, I think it will. I think it will. Yeah.
Yeah, and my toddler brain can only remember three things, so nine is three, is six too many.
That's why we write them all down. Yeah, exactly. That's why we write it down. Yeah. Um, my contact information is also on that page, so please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or, you know, anything's not working. Happy to help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, at one time I was engaged in.
Actually, at one time I was engaged in a process that we call the defining improving quality of life. This was in Spokane, Washington. And we went through a process very similar today, not in an organized way. You presented, but it 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 attempted to deal with the same things you're talking about.
Awesome. Well, good. Hopefully, this is familiar and and feels comfortable.
I think one of the challenges is a lot of the fundamental human needs are often contradictory, though. It's it's always a compromise.
Yeah.
We don't want industry, but we want lower taxes.
Okay. That's where the scenarios come in.
Yeah.
Okay, next item is uh formal commission action, and we'll first item on our agenda is uh approval of the minutes. Changes or corrections or?
I wasn't either.
I move that we move uh approve the minutes from the October second twenty twenty five meeting as shown.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. All those and approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those posts, name?
All abstain.
All those abstaining, correct. One, okay. You got that?
Yes, thank you.
Minutes have been approved. Uh next item is uh we're gonna have a public hearing uh regarding a zoning of and preliminary plat for Wiswell Farms, and I'll open the hearing.
Good evening. My name is Ian Trefferan, city planner. Uh this evening, I'm presenting application Z twenty five dash three and PP twenty five uh dash five, a rezoning and preliminary plat for Wiswell Farms. Uh the applicant, uh Jacob Knetzky of Own Engineering on behalf of Chris Coulson of AdAstra LLC uh is requesting approval of a rezoning from R four to RP one and revised preliminary plan for a approximately twenty-two point five four uh acre property located at one hundred ninety-fourth terrace, one hundred ninety-fifth terrace between Webster and Lincoln Street. I kind of break this down into two separate sections. We'll start with the rezoning and then move into the PDP. Yes.
Before you continue,
Oh.
I skipped two little items that we usually do.
I am so sorry.
No, no, it it you can go ahead and stay there, but we I have to raise some questions. One is, is there anybody that that has their ex parte issues with this item?
Nope.
No. And are there any conflict of interest?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'll get that down here soon. Um so yeah, we'll begin with the rezoning and then move into the revised PDP. Uh it's important to note that the rezoning uh only impacts the southern portion here uh shown on the screen. Uh it does not affect the remaining property. Uh the proposed rezoning to RP one does meet the future land use plan. This property is designated for residential uh and is compliant or I guess cohesive and compatible with the surrounding land uses of predominantly agricultural and residential single family. Um with that, the purpose of the rezoning is to accommodate the smaller lots uh in this development. Uh the R four zoning district only permits single-family residential on lots of nine thousand square feet, while the RP one zoning district permits modifications to the uh minimum lot size requirements, uh which would accommodate the fifty-five hundred square foot lots that are present in the Wiswell uh development. Uh so with that, I'll now move on to the preliminary plan component. Uh the preliminary plan impacts the entirety of the Wiswell development, uh not just the southern par- parcel. Uh the preliminary plan is seeking approval of three hundred and sixty-one lots up from the previously approved three hundred and fifty-five. Uh that previous application, sorry, I should have specified this, uh was approved in June of twenty twenty-two. The proposed increase does not meet the threshold for a substantial increase. Uh it's only about one point seven four percent increase in density and one point six nine percent increase in lot count. Uh so it does not require a new PDP. Once again, the proposed PDP does meet the standards of the comprehensive plan. Uh and for both of these applications, staff does recommend approval. Thank you.
Is there anybody from the development that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Pam Fortune Young. I'm with Own Engineering. Um I don't have anything to add, but we can stand for any questions.
Any questions?
I'll ask the obvious one, wh- which is just the change from R four to RP one is on these twenty-two acres. The intent of that is to develop that as single-family planned residential, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So the rezoning is to to be able to change the lot size, but also the 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 character of the development will will not be multifamily anymore. It'll be single family.
Yes, the development was actually never intended to be multifamily. Um it was always gonna be single family, but the previously approved zoning district didn't accommodate those small lots. So it's just to make the development fit in with the development regulations that we have.
You're you're saying R four could be used for single-family housing?
Yes.
Yeah, but you can't go down to fifty-five hundred square foot lots.
Yeah, it's gotta be nine thousand square.
Yes. By going to this, they can get more lots in there.
So so was your your I'm just asking, just to understand, but so the original plan would have been like large lot, single family here, and now they're just wanting to go ahead and do the same sized lots they've been developing so far?
From my understanding, the sizing of the lots isn't really changing from the previously approved plan. I don't have the full background as to how that ended up, but the currently in place zoning does not support the size lots that were platted previously. So it's kind of taking something that was not in compliance and bringing it into compliance by rezoning it.
So so for the neighbors who are to the south of this area, previously, would they have been under the impression that this was gonna be multifamily?
Yes.
Okay, so now from their perspective, this might be an improvement, right?
Definitely.
For them, right, because now it's gonna be single-family abutting to them, even if the lots are fairly small.
In a planned single family.
Yeah, for RP one. Um so Ian, question is, i- is there any type of, th- these are like large lot rural residential properties to the south? I assume those are unincorporated. I can't quite get my internet working. Okay. So those are outside the city limits. I- is there any consideration being given in this plan for the area that abuts up to these large lot rural residential properties in terms of the plan to kind of ease that transition?
Yeah, as of now, there's no landscaping buffer included with this. There are standard rear yard setbacks that do apply as well as easements that prevent certain structures from being placed that close to the property line, but there's no um specific landscaping, as far as I'm aware, that backs up to that property line um included with this PDP.
Oh, and and we can also look at that when they bring the the
site site plan.
Yeah.
Because it'd have to have to be approved.
Yeah. And and I know we're just talking rezoning here, but but I I'd like to say that that would be something nice to see in the future, once once they have a preliminary plat. To to see some consideration given. I think switching this to single-family is already nice for those those neighbors, for sure. Uh because the the number of doors that would be in this on these twenty-two acres would be reduced, I would assume. No.
Well, this.
Increased?
Increased.
Okay, fine.
By six units, yeah.
Six, yeah, it's not not material then, but i- as far as as far as compatibility.
I think the advantage is that the the planned, the change would help the the with issues related to neighbors, because we can designate that certain berms need to put in and certain kinds of vegetation need to put in if it's gonna be a planned community. So I mean, to a great extent, it's it's better for the res- the neighbors than it is right now.
Right, way better than just R four.
Yeah.
If the concern is, you know, compatible land uses and what, I mean, by having the RP one zoning district there, it it doesn't set the standard of there being multifamily zoning in the area. Uh so if that is the concern, then yes, it it would kind of limit that as far as like looking at and saying, well, that's already zoned R four. It would be good next to it, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think the RP one, and I and I think the planning commission is in general pretty supportive of residential plan districts, because it does give the city more control over what gets ultimately developed. As the Johnson County representative on the planning commission, I'm sensitive to where city development, including single-family, abuts to unincorporated properties. So one of the things that I would like to see is just the current, the existing comp plan contemplates special consideration when single-family abuts to large lot rural residential properties. So that's something I would like to see in the plat once it's developed or 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 drawn out.
Sure.
If possible, but I think this is positive. Um and it and I if I if I remember correctly, the area to the north of this twenty-two acres is isn't it designated as, because it's flood plain, so is it is it gonna be park property ultimately? Yeah, it's super nice. So this this area will be sort of naturally divided by the flood plain, which will be park from the the properties to the north. So, okay. It'll be nice.
I appreciate the context for your background and
Sure.
Look forward to it.
So we're going for or went from nine thousand, was the average lot size nine thousand square feet before, and now it's fifty-five hundred, or what is the actual average lot size?
I don't have the average on hand. I'm not sure if the applicant does, but between the preliminary plat and the the original preliminary plat and this one, uh it's not a substantial drop in lot sizes or increase. They're effectively about the same. It's really more about bringing it back into compliance with the code.
And you said it was two of twenty twenty-two that we approved this?
Uh yes, June of twenty twenty-two.
Doesn't seem that long.
Thank you.
And this is all under the RHID, I believe.
I I can't speak to that. I'm not certain.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ivan. There any members in the of the audience that would like to speak either in support of this rezoning or against the rezon?
Can you tell me what the cross streets are? I can't really make it out on the digital here.
Web- Webster should be the main north-south corridor on the west side.
It's Webster. It's the west.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. She's come to podium.
Do you?
Can you repeat her questions in your microphone?
What are the what are the the adjoining streets?
Yeah.
Cross streets, yeah. You want that?
Sure, um the adjoining cross streets are Webster uh to the west and I believe
One ninety-ninth.
Hundred ninety, thank you.
To the south.
To the south.
Can you do you need her name and address?
Yes. Oh, this is my first time.
You're on the record now.
You're on the record.
That's not actually one hundred ninety-ninth to the south. It's actually further south than that.
A hundred and I'm worth in a hundred and ninety-four.
Yeah, yeah. Good point.
Hi, Kristy West, two zero two five four, West one hundred ninety-third Terrace in Will's Well Farms.
Okay.
West, Kristy West. Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's a straight line, but it's not. That's not the road. No, you're right. That's the back of those re- rural residences. Good point. Good point.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll close the hearing. Uh any any other discussion?
I just, I don't have an issue with this, other than the fact that we just rezoned it to R four just like three years ago, and now we're rezoning it again. It seems like we're starting to do a lot of rezoning of previous things we've rezoned. And I I don't think that's a good precedent to set. Not that I'm saying we should not shouldn't approve this. I'm just talking in general that the the rezoning of rezoning seems very odd. Sounded like it was mostly to make it compliant. So which makes me wonder if it should have been RP one from the beginning.
I wondered that too, if it was initially
Yeah.
zoned or rezoned incorrectly. And now it's being.
I'm trying to remember. It's been.
Well, I mean, they said that they had no intentions of doing multifamily, so then it that begs the question of why did it go to an R four? So was it just an oversight or was it a typo?
Do the nine thousand square foot lots in R four, right?
She's got a comment.
Okay.
I can answer that question. When this uh a- application first came through, there was a lot of um discussion about whether to go with multifamily or single-family. Ultimately, it landed on single-family and the zoning didn't change on that application, so it was an oversight. It was always intended to be single-family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's actually good, because I was curious if the market conditions had changed or something, but it sounds like that was always the plan.
So it's just.
Commerection.
So we've had some other um properties that we have zoned like R two and R three that have also been always considered to be single-family. Was what was the intention of it? So anyway, I I I'm not opposed to that, just just trying to think through the whole process of what when it came through last time.
Yeah, he he's bringing up a great point, like right next to my house, right, RP three.
Right, yes.
So it's uh zoned RP three for eighty acres, except they intended to put forty acres, single-family, and then closer when you get to one ninety-ninth. It's over by by the high school. When you get close to one ninety-ninth, it's more duplexes, quads, I think.
Right. That's what I remember.
But it's still zoned RP three, which I was against at the time. Because I live right next to it.
I know, that's a good point. I I guess what softens blow on this one is that it's going to a planned district.
Sure.
And that just always, you know, I think this like West State's board is always in favor of a planned district, because it gives us a little bit more teeth of what we can do, and I believe it's an annual review maybe of like landscaping. Is that true? Of, no, no, okay, I make it. Don't disregard that, erase that.
Up front, though.
Up front, upfront, we can add the additional landscaping.
We get to see the elevations of those structures.
Yeah, the plan is always better than the just the regular R, no matter what it is, even though it's smaller lot sizes. For us.
I didn't mean to go off on a tangent on this, but it it just, I I think it's relevant to the conversation
It is.
of of future, how we're how we approve the the rezoning of things.
Absolutely, something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially when we go back and some of those properties that have sat for so long and then they're coming in. And it's a totally different thought process. Yeah, so we we do need to make sure that we were remembering and thinking valid point.
Well, I mean, but I think when it's long term, it's a little bit easier to understand why it's being changed, because it may be also a new developer.
Right, no, I that's what I'm saying. It it was more of a general conversation.
But when it's within a few years of just having it done, it does raise a question. Okay. There are no other questions. I stand for a motion.
I I believe we need to close the public hearing first.
I believe I did.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear it.
I, it's okay.
I move to recommend approval to the Spring Hill governing body for rezoning and preliminary plan applications Z dash twenty-five dash three and PP dash twenty-five dash five with conditions as presented by staff.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Uh we'll start uh on the left.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six zero zero. I can count today. Six zero zero.
Seven.
Oh, seven.
Cannot count today.
Okay. There will be a fourteen-day
Protest period.
Protest period, okay, very good. Next item, final plat application for this property.
Yep. Perfect. Didn't want to interrupt again. Uh yes, so application FP twenty-five dash ten, this is the fourth plat for Wiswell Farms, which we have just reviewed for the rezoning and preliminary plat. Um a lot of the same information here, uh same applicant. Uh this one is for AdAstra Land Holdings. Um with Own Incorporated as the engineer. See, twenty-two point five four acres. Water service will be provided by Johnson County Water One, sewer will be provided by uh the city. There is a standard uh There is a standard, uh, infrastructure agreement, uh, I'm sorry, a, uh, standard IA agreement. Included with this application. That's pretty much all that I got.
Any questions? Any concerns?
Yeah, if you zoom in. On. That, there's a pie-shaped piece of property. It's very awkward, it's, it's, uh, just a little bit left of center. What would be on the north side of a hundred ninety-seventh Terrace at the corner of Lincoln and a hundred ninety-seventh Terrace there?
Yes.
I don't know why, that just stood out to me instantly, like, how it would be situated. I don't know, I don't know, that's. A very odd piece to me.
Let's, we're gonna be a big lot here.
It's.
You're talking about the triangle?
Thirty-sixty-seven.
Track, it's a tract.
Oh, okay, okay, then, perfect. I did not see that, okay.
I could zoom in this.
Yeah.
Every time I, oh, it, it was grainy at first when I did it. Okay, sorry guys, rookie move, my bad. That makes me feel a lot better, though.
The question I have, and it, it's not clear on, on the diagram. Is there another exit to this particular section?
Uh, at the moment, no, the only.
That hits, uh.
Sorry.
That hits Webster?
No, at the moment, the current, the only access on this property will be to the north.
So it's through that bridge?
That is correct. Yes.
I raised that question because historically. The Plan Commission has an issue, has had an issue with. Properties that only have one single exit. Because of emergency vehicles being blocked or whatever.
Sure.
And Prairie Ridge was one of those, and there was a lot of negative feedback about that.
A hundred percent, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Should I defer to you for this question?
What's that?
Uh, about the access points.
Yeah. See any place that this one's gonna go in?
But it is bound by the railroad to the right, to the east, I should say, so there's nothing you can do there. And then you've got the floodplain to the north.
Mass and clarification.
Okay, alright.
Just to answer your question, from that cul-de-sac, there is a temporary access that'll, uh. Be connected to Webster, just for emergencies.
From which?
From which one?
From the hundred ninety-seventh Terrace cul-de-sac, that very nor, or.
Okay, so from the end of that cul-de-sac?
Yes, to the west, through that tract, there will be a, a emergency access.
So that one on the southwest corner?
Yeah.
There's another tract, not another lot of the house.
Yes.
Is there a plan in the future for a permanent second access?
Potentially, if the Lincoln Street is connected to the south, and that, that land to the south is developed, that's when that connection would come in. But at this point, that emergency access will stay in until there's another access point.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. You may not know the answer to this, but Amy or. So with that emergency access, would that be similar to what's in Brookwood Farms coming off of a hundred and ninety-ninth? That, that type of a?
Yeah.
That's what we're, that's what I'm thinking that she's talking about, is that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you probably.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, so, it's not fair to ask you, but I'm thinking that's what she would be talking about, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually, it's part of the park.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I'm just trying to understand where the, um, Lincoln Street comes in, and is that? I'm assuming that we have future plans for Lincoln Street to go in to connect?
That will go, that's the one that I believe goes through those, that property to the south there, the unincorporated part.
And have we purchased, has the city purchased that right away?
Future.
Okay.
If that ever becomes developed.
So I'm, I'm looking Google Maps right now, it looks like it's just an empty field, is that right? Okay.
Troy, where is that, what direction?
Um, straight south, where Lincoln Street ends up at the end of that property. I was just trying to figure out how, because that, we don't want the street to end there, obviously, we want it to connect it through as you're going along.
Yeah.
Just Lincoln Street here.
So you're saying that goes on to the, uh, eleven acres, which is undeveloped to the south?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where Lincoln Street should come in at.
Over here?
No, it's gonna be over here, because it's gonna be.
Do you have it up there?
Cause this is Webster, that's gonna be Webster, so Lincoln Street's gotta be. Somewhere over in this way. What is that?
Okay.
Crestone, that's Falcon Ridge. I'm just trying to figure out where Lincoln Street is, further to the south or north, either one. They should come back in, they're calling it that, it's gotta come back in. It is right there.
Yeah.
Okay, get to hundred ninety-ninth now.
Anything else?
You haven't got there yet, there's a hundred ninety-nine, so you gotta come up here.
You're right, it's on this.
So is that gonna be called Lincoln Street all the way through, even though it comes that far to the west?
Um, eventually, I mean, eventually, there's no.
Question marks through it.
Yeah.
It's, but it's gonna be called Lincoln Street all the way through?
Yes.
I mean, is that the intention?
Yeah, it goes up north and connects west, shoots back into Webster.
And then it would go, perhaps, in the future, down to one ninety-ninth?
No.
But, yeah, if that, I mean, I can't imagine.
It just seems odd that you're call, calling it, uh, Lincoln Street to the south of there, when it's gonna connect up with what Crestone or whatever that is?
I don't know that it'll connect directly in.
So at the moment, you can see that, uh, Lincoln Street does tee in here to Webster, and then this is the leg that continues on down south.
Right.
Uh, so this will continue the naming scheme of Lincoln Street until it tees in somewhere to the south.
Right, that's why, that's why it just, it just seemed odd that you were calling Lincoln Street, uh, Street all the way through, when it comes back and. Connects in with approximately Crestone to the south.
I'm not certain.
So zoom in right there.
Oh, you're talking about.
I see, yes.
Okay, yeah, well, that assumes that it's gonna connect up with Crestone, but.
So where else would it have the possibility connecting to?
If you.
I'm not gonna, uh, you know.
If you do scroll down the map further.
No, I, Lincoln is further to the east, I know, I understand.
I, I know, but it's not far off from like where Lincoln Street would be going through.
It, okay.
I mean, if that.
I'm just questioning the naming of the street with the way that.
That'll get dealt with.
With the next.
We're gonna name it Troy Street, we're gonna name it Mitchell Boulevard.
Expressway.
That's what we'll call it, whether it's named that or not, that's what it will be.
My question.
He's thinking way ahead.
I, I'm just.
My question had nothing to do with, uh, the naming of the street, my concern is exits and entries into the subdivision. But, uh, if there's an emergency exit, then.
I agree with that.
I assume the fire.
Fire, yeah, we had.
Didn't have a problem.
Didn't used to, but they take care of that now, yeah, back when we were young bucks on this, we did have to watch that, but. They're all doing it now.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? If not.
Yep, we're good.
If not, stand for a motion.
As long, as long as you name it, right? I'll, I'll kinda reiterate what I said earlier, so, but when I look at the properties to the south that are rural residential. Fortunately, the majority of those are. Positioned pretty far to the south, the majority of them, except for on the far eastern portion on Main Street. There are some homes which are a little bit closer to the southeast corner of this, this plat. I don't think it's for us to address tonight, but I think in the future, as we look at the comp plan, I think I'd like us to put some requirements. Ultimately into our ordinances or zoning requirements that would contemplate, you know, buffers. Where, where we, you know, are putting single family, especially on smaller lots, like RP one lots, up against these rural residential properties. Um, these properties are on smaller lots, so they're kinda naturally maybe more compatible in a sense. The, the one on Main Street on the northwest end of that was built in nineteen-ten. So it's been there a while. Uh, but, but I think in this instance, it'll be okay, because those homes are on smaller lots, even though they're unincorporated. Um, and they generally have a little more distance, but, but that's not always the case.
Correct.
Something to think about in the future.
Motion. Troy.
I, I don't have the, up in front of me.
I move to recommend approval of application F P dash twenty-five dash ten, final plat of Willswell Farms. Fourth plat to the Spring Hill governing body, including any conditions as presented in the staff report.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero zero. Our next item is, uh, final plat application Oakwoods fifth plat.
Okay, so this application is F P twenty-five dash eleven, uh, a final plat for Oakwoods fifth plat. The property is located, uh, approximately at two hundred fifteenth and Lone Elm Road, uh, and is a fifteen point seven four acre property. Uh, consisting of fifty-five, uh, single family lots. Uh, the applicant, Phelps Engineering. Is, has submitted for this application. With that. City will be providing both sewer and water, and a standard IA agreement will be in effect. Uh, a little bit of background with this property, uh, the preliminary plat was approved on September sixteenth of this year. With the conditions listed there in the staff report, uh, this application does meet the standards of our zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, and staff does recommend approval.
No changes since the preliminary plat, to your knowledge?
No, sir.
And when did you say it was approved?
Uh, September sixteenth of this year.
It was a revised plat.
Oh, revised.
We had a planning commission meeting on the sixteenth?
That was the.
Oh, that was the city council, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
We rezoned it from R two, maybe, to R one, or?
Yeah.
I can't remember, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is another one that we rezoned like four times. Yeah, speaking of.
Over the years?
Speaking of, in the last five years.
Yeah, I said over the years?
Yeah. Like I said, I'm not opposed to it, it is. Something to. Be aware of.
Well, it's not changing the number of doors.
Well, it did when we rezoned it.
It, well, it did.
Yeah.
You're right.
But as I recall, it was, it was seen as a net positive to that.
No, I, yeah, no, I, I'm not, like I said, I, I wasn't opposed to it, just more, more addressing the bigger picture.
Sure.
What?
The, the continuous rezoning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no chance of adding another entrance onto the highway there or something, right?
Not to the highway without KDOT's approval.
Just making sure.
I think they'd be very, uh, I'd be surprised.
Yeah. I would be very upset. Move to recommend approval of application F P dash twenty-five dash eleven of Oakwoods fifth plat to the governing body. With the conditions as presented in the staff report.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Take a vote, starting at the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes seven zero zero.
Application F P twenty-five dash twelve Oaks, Oakwoods sixth plat. Located at two fifteen and Lone Elm Road, um, this property is approximately eight point nine six acres with. Forty-one single family lots located on it, uh, once again, this is a, uh, final plat for, um, that. This is a final plat that does not deviate at all from the approved preliminary plat, which was approved by city council at the same, uh, uh, meeting. On September sixteenth of this year. Once again, city sewer and water is being provided, uh, a standard IA agreement is included. With conditions of approval, staff does recommend approval.
I'm gonna bring up one of the subjects we always talk about with this one, which is. What's the status of connecting to the roads to the east? From this area.
It's all gonna be development-driven, uh, it's, yeah, it's not something that we can really postulate on.
Move that we recommend approval of F P dash twenty-five dash twelve, final plat for Oakwoods sixth plat to the governing body with the staff. As presented in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those, uh, in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes seven zero zero.
Okay. So, this application is F P twenty-five dash thirteen, Hidden Hills fourth plat. This is. Uh, a fourteen point six four acre property, uh, containing about fifty-three lots. Uh, the applicant, uh, Phelps Engineering, or, yeah, Phelps Engineering, uh, Doug Oven. Uh, is requesting approval of this final plat. Uh, there are no changes from the approved preliminary plat, which was approved. Back in.
No, this is final plat.
I apologize, I don't have it here, I have the revision to it where they renamed it back in twenty-twenty-four.
Is this what's bringing us back to the east there?
Uh, do I have control over this?
Is it what?
Isn't this what's bringing the roads back to the east? You said it was, it was driven by.
No, that was the other.
That was the previous application, I was just explaining that.
No, but isn't this just east of the where, of where we were just approved?
No, this one is. To the northeast.
Sorry, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, got lost there for a second here. So once again, standard improvement agreement will be in effect, um. Water and sewer will be provided. Actually, water will be provided by Water One, I believe, and then sewer by the city. Once again, the application does meet all the standards that we've got, um, and staff does recommend approval, uh, for this application as well.
So this isn't the final plat, there's a fifth plat to the north, is that correct?
Yes, there is, I believe, one more plat to.
At least one or two.
One or two, okay.
I would guess two more fatal.
Okay. Thank you.
I move to recommend approval of application F P dash twenty-five dash thirteen, final plat of Hidden Hills. Fourth plat to the Spring Hill governing body, including any conditions as presented in the staff report.
Oh, second.
Go ahead.
Got a motion in a second, uh, all those in favor, let's start on the right.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero zero.
That threw me off. What am I supposed to say? I was waiting.
Keeping you on your toes.
I'd say.
I was waiting.
Okay, so this application is, oh, sorry. Okay, so this application is, oh, sorry, did I cut somebody off?
You're fine.
You're good.
Bye, Doug.
Just thinking, yeah, you're good.
Uh, so yes, this application LS twenty five dash two is a lot split application for, uh, approximately zero point two six acres of land located nineteen seven oh two, nineteen seven oh four west one hundred ninety fifth place, uh, otherwise known as Boulder Springs Third. Uh, water and sewer is being provided, uh, I believe by the city, once again, or, yes. Water by Water One, sewer by the city, um, I don't know why that wasn't, um, the application does meet all the developments that we have in place, uh, and staff is supportive of this application, uh, it's simple conduing out for this property. I believe that this is actually, there was a series of these done at the last planning commission meeting, and this is just finishing.
This, I think, was the one lot that had already been sold, maybe, and was no longer owned by the developer, so it was really up to the new owner to decide if they wanted to follow suit.
Yeah.
To divide it.
Move to, uh, recommend to the city council the lot split for LS twenty five, oh, maybe this one doesn't have to go, move to approve the lot split of application LS dash twenty five dash two, with the acknowledgement of the ownership change, including any condi- conditions as presented by staff.
Second.
Well, motion and a second, all those in favor, we'll start on the right.
Aye.
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 Motion passes seven zero zero. That's the action items done, discussion.
Um, I'll give the reports tonight, so at the October ninth, uh, city council meeting, um, the, they approved the final plat for Hecky Town Homes, um, and the site plan for Hecky Town Homes, um, at the October twenty third meeting, they approved, um, ordinance twenty twenty five dash eighteen, that was the conditional use permit for, uh, Spring Hill Elementary, and then they approved ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen, which was the amendment to the zoning code, um, the text amendment for the, uh.
Data centers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's all for, um, the reports, um, we did wanna, well, I needed to bring up, um, the January meeting, it's regularly scheduled for New Year's Day, I won't be here, so I would like to move it.
Well, we, we'll miss you.
Thank you, oh, you're gonna be here, okay.
I do have the day off.
Watching football.
I will not be here.
Okay, good, so do we have a date that maybe we can pick?
And the next Thursday would be city council, correct?
Correct, and then on the Tuesday and Wednesday, I think you have cemetery board and the rec, but we could always move the cemetery board if we needed to out of the room.
Move them out, come on.
What, what? Oh, January first.
Yeah.
So the fifteenth, maybe?
Fifteen.
I don't have my phone with me tonight.
That's a Thursday, um.
The third, Thursday.
In between the two council meetings.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah?
I, I will not be, I will not be here that night.
Okay.
We'll probably have to.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
The fifteenth?
Upset on Lincoln Street. Not if you named it after me, I'm not.
Did you say January fifteenth?
Yeah. Yeah, does that work for you?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Probably.
You're good?
I, I, I can make it, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll just plan on January fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay? And that's all I have, thank you.
Cool. Any other questions?
I have, I have just a question, uh, cause I'm getting it asked in our neighborhood, the states of Wolf Creek, um, and you might have had this too, are they trying to, everybody's coming up to me and saying, why are they putting slab homes on that new street? And it's not, right?
No, the plans show basements.
I know, I, that's what I told them, that's all I told them, I said, they haven't changed anything.
I meant to call Kevin back, and I got extremely busy, but I looked at the plans, and most of them had basements that were submitted, so.
The reason I can think they're saying that is because it's filled in.
Okay.
And it looks like a slab, they're gonna put a slab, but I, I know it's basement, okay, I'll just tell them.
Yeah, I could double.
That's that too, yeah, and I went over there, and I was like, what is going on over there, it does look pretty weird, like, they're putting slab.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it's not just the garage portion?
No, it's, it's like.
It's dug out and spilled in.
It's like a, they only went down like a foot excavated and then. Yeah.
Odd, yeah.
Um, I'll send somebody out, cause the plans I looked at showed basements, so.
That's what was approved, so they can't put slab homes there.
Well, they can, you can't stop them.
They, they didn't come back here and redo the.
No, you can't stop them from doing a slab.
Well, wait a minute, that's what they, that's what was approved.
That's.
When they approved the RP three, the site plan.
So when you're approving.
Homes with basements, nice homes with basements.
Elevations.
You're approving elevations.
That's correct, you're, you're approving the exterior elevations, the interior layout in the basement, that's outside.
There's no control over that.
That's outside the purview of public hearing process.
So what would?
So maybe we need to change our regulation.
I was gonna ask, what would ensure that that can't happen necessarily?
Or the building code driven?
Right, change the building code.
All right.
Or the RP requirement.
Codes we need to update.
Yeah.
Our building code is trying to be updated, but without a director and a building official, we're.
Yeah, it, let me.
Where it stops bill.
Since this is an important subject for me, since it's three yards from my house, so it, it was originally come up as, you know, it was gonna be rezoned, it's RP three, and they'd, they, we fought it because, you know, we didn't want multifamily up to six units right next to us. But then they said, well, wait a minute, here's the site plan, it's a good builder, Quinn, who I don't think any longer is the builder, is he?
He's the developer still, I don't know that he's actually building.
Okay, so anyway, he, they presented the site plan, you know, forty acres was, you know, nice homes, five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollar homes, not slab homes. So, and then the other forty acres would be the multifamily, you know, uh, duplexes, quads, you know, close to one hundred ninety ninth street. And so, that was a lot, the, if that's, if they're putting in slab homes, that's a lot different than what was presented.
The, I don't think they are, the building plans, like I said, were approved with basement, so they can't deviate from that.
That's what I.
So I'll send somebody out that has more knowledge of building than I do to look at them.
Well, that's why I was bringing it up, because they just said that slab homes could be put in.
They can, yeah, but if they apply for building permit with the basement.
But, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the building permit is, like basements.
Yeah, it's just like from.
It's based on the permit, okay.
Yeah.
The actual approved plan that you saw isn't as related to it as the building.
Yeah, all right, but.
I see what you're saying, all right, yeah.
Thank you.
But let's go back to that, though, we're seeing a plan that we think we're getting the basements, and then they come in with the building permit without the basement.
Cindy, I didn't think that, though, I don't.
So, yeah.
We control everything from the street, like, we can't control anything on the inside.
That's correct, your purview, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, your purview is explicitly outside of the boundary of the home, what's inside of it is, is not the jurisdiction of the planning commission.
Right.
Or the city council for that matter.
But, let's just go, let me finish up here, so if we're thinking that, because the basements have been a big, sidewalks have been my soapbox, now I've got some other people on that soapbox for me. So now it's, it's this whole, we're tornado alley, I want to see homes with basements, or at least with.
Safe rooms.
Safe rooms, shelters, whether that's in the garage, whether that's wherever, whatever we're, we're putting in. I would, I'm really pushing that we move towards that in some type of ordinance or whatever, whatever, wherever we need to put it. So I'm questioning how we can then know what we are getting and what we're not getting, and where we can go as a board or a city to ensure that.
I would say that your most direct route towards that end would be the building code, I think that'd have to be a conversation that we had with the building official when they get hired on, we look at making those amendments, because when it comes to your role in development process, it is outside the bounds, with the exception of building codes as they're adopted, I'm not certain if there's a building code board here, if there's, no, so it's adopted by the planning commission, okay. Still learning, so in that case, that would be your involvement at the process, would be having those codes adopted and the amendments to the codes, uh, so it's certainly something that can be talked about whenever we get down that process, cause I know they need to be updated, so, and that's maybe that's being worked on.
Is that something that we need to also put a tooth into, into the, um, comp plan?
I think that's probably a bit granular for the comp plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just.
Yeah.
No, it's a good question, I just.
But.
It's a good question, but that's a bit granular for the comp plan, so I think we, you want your comp plan, yeah, to be just that overarching document of, here's the general things we wanna see where, as opposed to, yeah, so.
I'm just asking, just while we're talking about it.
No, yeah, that's good.
Otherwise you're gonna forget.
Right, no, and it's a good question, and for example, you know, like, we've had the issues with how are we putting our garages in, and our current comp plan talks about where, how we want our garages aligned, ideally, we would just want that in our city code and our building code, rather than, well, what's the comp plan say, oh, the comp plan's not really binding, so, yeah, I, you know, we can put it in there, it'd still ignore you and me, so, maybe me more than you, but, yeah.
But, but Cindy, I, I think you're making a good point, and it, and it also does, it, maybe the comp plan is not the right context for that, but it does point to, I think, a lot of things that the planning commission is interested in advancing for the city in terms of, let's update our building codes, let's update our electrical code, let's look at ALATHA's UDO, and understand what, what things should we be adopting so that ALATHA is not out there saying, hey, developers and, and, and residents, you should hope that these developments occur in our city because it will be built to a higher standard than if it were built in Spring Hill, that's what they're out there saying. So I would like to know, what, what changes do we need to make so that we're at parity with neighboring cities? I totally get that ALATHA and Ovalon Park are much bigger than us, they have much larger resources, but still, within, within our capabilities, what can we do to, to try to close that gap?
Well, that's just updating the building code, but I can tell you that our builders are building to the higher code, they are not building to the two thousand six.
I, I remember Pat saying that, but I don't know, I, I would rather it be required and we not rely on their goodwill.
Well, and like I said, we need a director and a building official to take care of that, so that will be one of their first.
Yeah.
Their first job.
I just moved into my brand new house in two thousand twenty two, and the electrical codes are not up to what they should be, like that outlets in the islands and things like that.
The electrical code is separate from the building.
That's just one example, though, like, that means that they're not following the codes, though, so, like, the higher standard codes, so I would disagree that they are.
But, but as a city, we, our electrical code, I think, is from twenty ten, so, or maybe before, two thousand six.
It's two thousand six, so, electrical code is two thousand six, but it's.
Exactly, exactly, and they're not building to the standard of other cities that have the newer codes.
I, I'm not, I'm not piling on here, I'm just saying that, like, maybe in our work sessions, maybe, uh, Cindy, like, your, your concern for basements and tornado shelters or, or safe rooms, like, maybe as a side, it won't be in the comp plan, but maybe these are things that we can discuss as a group, that, that we want to, you know, share with the staff, that say, you know, we want you guys, long term, to look at, you know, bringing our electrical code up, bringing our building codes up, look at the UDOs for neighboring cities and seeing, how can we close the gap with requirements, and, and I really like, like, like with ALATHA, with the cold storage facility, I don't know how closely everyone followed that, but I mean, they were calling us out.
Oh, big time. They were.
Left, right, and center.
It was bad.
Yeah.
It was bad.
Yeah.
And, and so I, I don't wanna, I don't want us as a city to be in that position in the future, I'd, I'd like the decision to be, you know, either, you know, here or there, not, here's what's gonna happen if it goes over there, because they, they allow lower standards.
We don't wanna be ALATHA or Ovalon Park necessarily, we want to be up at the same standard as ALATHA, Ovalon Park, so that we can have that quality lifestyle here in Spring Hill, whatever that looks like to you as an individual, but at least you know you're moving into quality community with standards.
Yeah. And, and in the future, you know, we don't want, we don't want people driving down one sixty nine highway to be able to tell exactly where Spring Hill is, because now all of a sudden, the industrial development looks like trash.
Yes.
And, and I'm, I'm being a little bit dramatic by saying that, but you know what I'm saying, it's like, if the standards are so different.
Yes.
Yes, you are.
So, right.
I just know that. My soapbox is gonna be that, but every, every tornado season, it is a big question all the time, where do we go, where do we go, where do we go? Because there are so many slab homes or non-opportunities, my mother lived here for years, lived in housing that was senior housing, ad- adult, uh, older adults, they were, they're, they're just next door neighbor, next door neighbor. And they had no place in there, and it was, it was approved years back for them to go, there was no safe room, there was no anything, and to transport any of those people, it was going to be difficult, so I just wanna make sure that we can look at that and start thinking outside of the box and what we can do.
Yes, absolutely, I will say, this has all been great conversation, because these are things that we're looking at, I mean, one of the big parts of my job here now is to help push through, or at least not push through, reduce, reduce research and talk about and try and figure out ways that we can elevate the UDO and development standards and the way that we do development, and certainly, building codes are not a part of what I do, but they will be a part of the codes official, um, and I'm looking forward to it, I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for us to have those conversations and figure out what we need to do, so, yeah.
Thank you, it's great.
Other items, if not, stand for motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Adjourn.